...under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Could you switch places on me?
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jamal Brown from the United Church of Christ. Welcome back, Pastor. And he gave the best sermon ever on anti-bullying, and we're going to keep him on the team, okay? He was terrific.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And Happy New Year to everyone, if we'll bow our heads. Father God, we thank you, dear Lord, for another year and another opportunity. Father, as we've gotten through the holidays now, we get down to the task and business at hand of leading your communities, Lord God, specifically here in Holly Springs. We ask, according to as Jane stated, where we lack wisdom, we ask for wisdom, Lord God. We ask in faith. Nothing unbraiding, Lord God, and we believe you will give it to us in abundance. Blessed now these here your leaders, Lord God, and direct them as servant leaders, Lord, to serve your community here, and we give you thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Item number four, adjustment approval of January 5, 2016 meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt the January 5, 2016 meeting agenda as stated, as listed.
Motion made in second and all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item number six, public comment period. I'll open a public comment period. One signed up, Joe Fanjoy. You know the drill.
We hope.
We hope, right? I got you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Town Council and staff, my name is Joe Fanjoy. I live at 109 Fairground Road in the Fair Hill subdivision. It's right down Grigsby, directly across from the softball field. So I am coming here tonight to follow up on some comments that I made at the last meeting, the December 15 meeting. And that is that I would like to formally request the town to take over the maintenance of Grigsby Avenue because the road is in really, really poor condition, and it needs resurfacing at a minimum and whatever other maintenance needs, you know, come along with that. It needs resurfacing really badly. Like if, for example, if you're going, leaving Town Hall, going towards Sug Farm, you go over Maple, which is where the entrance is to Lakeside. There's a little narrow stretch right before you get to the curb, curve, right where you guys approved that new sidewalk. It's a real narrow stretch, and there's just, it's riddled with potholes. So coming or going, you know, you're dodging potholes and oncoming traffic if it's, if there's any, at least the pedestrians are off the street now, thanks to you guys. So anyway, you know, I'm requesting that you take over the maintenance of the street. You know, my understanding is that with DOT, that's, it's a very, it's very low on the priority list. Last year this time, Engineering Director, Director gave me a contact, and I talked to a guy at the NC DOT in charge of these things, and he said, look, you know, really, that's, it's pretty low on our list. And, I mean, you guys deal with DOT all the time, so, I mean, that shouldn't really be a surprise to you. So, you know, it looks like there's really no prospects for that to get repaved. I mean, granted, once in a while, the potholes are replaced, but, you know, if, if you look at that section of pavement, you know, it's just, you know, it's, they're going to spring up, and they're continuous throughout the winter especially. So, you know, another argument is that, you know, I believe that road is just substandard. The particular spot I'm thinking about, it's, I measured it this morning at 21 feet wide. You know, at my street, which is like interior of a subdivision, it's 23 feet wide. So maybe, I was thinking, maybe the inside of my subdivision is probably the minimum width at 23, and actually, this one, on a much, much busier road, is at 21. So, you know, it, it needs some attention there, and like I mentioned before, you know, there's two subdivisions that border that section. One is Lakeside and one is Parkside. And when those subdivisions came in, I think the town was probably a little more generous with being flexible with developers and whether they needed to, you know, complete the full repaving. Anyway, that particular section has Lakeside on one side and, and Parkside on the other, and neither one has curb and gutter there. So, you know, I just feel like that it's time for the town to, to come in and fill some of the gaps that, that are out there. So I understand also that you probably don't have enough money to take care of the streets that you do have, but this one actually might not be a bad deal for you because with the new subdivision, you know, he's going to have to pave all the way from the end of my subdivision, which is Fair Hill, which ends about where the crosswalk is at the greenway for the Bass Lake Fallout, or that crosswalk is at the corner of Wumble. He's going to have to repave from, you know, all along that whole road frontage on the property that was just rezoned. So that's going to bring in curb and gutter and sidewalk basically from there all the way to Sug Farm. And on the opposite side of the road, it's already covered by Valley Field for most of that. So that's going to leave at my neighborhood, Fair Hill, then around the curve, and then at the spots where all these potholes are. So it's not really the entire segment of Grigsby that you would have to, like, address immediately, anyway. You know, the immediate concern, you know, I've already pointed out, but in the long term, it might not be so bad. You know, it's an NC DOT street, from my understanding, from Stinson all the way to Sug. You know, part of it's in good condition, but it's really that throat, that 21-foot-wide section that's just, I mean, to me, it's unacceptable, and it's embarrassing because we have, you know, I have friends and family coming to my house all the time. The town has people come down to Sug Farm and to Wumble for annual events, Fourth of July, Poly Fest, 5Ks, whatever, and every, just about every one of those people come down that section of the street, and I, you know, I feel like it needs to be addressed. So my request is that you put this on your agenda for the winter retreat and give it serious consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Good points.
Thank you.
This point will close the public comment period and go to... Agenda item 6A, Special Recognition, Holly Springs Martin Luther King Jr. Community Foundation Request, Robert King, Parish Wumble, and/or both. And/or both. I think everybody knows you, but still, go to the podium if you would.
Don't come over the top of you, but I'll come over here.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm Parish Wumble, President of the Holly Springs Martin Luther King Jr. Committee, Inc. And we are in the process of having our annual march that we used to have. We're also going to have a unity day, which will be our second one, which will be Saturday, the 16th. And I have asked for a speaker on that day. And we have breakfast, we have the arts program, and we'll be doing the arts, and we'll have winners from the art contest on that Saturday. So we can do that, so we won't have to take up so much time on that Sunday. That Sunday, we're going to try to make that a one-able presentation. We will march from 3:30, food line to the center. We have the program at 4 o'clock.
Yep.
We'll have refreshments at 5, and we hope to be out of there and out by 5:15 after cleaning up. So all of you are invited to attend. If you don't want to walk, just come over to the program, and we're going to have a bunch of little kids doing our singing this time, trying to get them affiliated with us and they are from three years to about 10. And I hope you will enjoy that. We're looking forward to it.
Any questions, Ham, or comments?
No, just looking forward to it.
Looking forward to it?
Yes, sir.
I think we got a, we got a speaker for the morning and a speaker for the next day.
We have a speaker, well, we got...
Our introductory speaker.
Introduction speaker for that Saturday.
Yep.
Which is one of our own. And we have one, well, one son is our own from the, from the Christian, the Messers Church over on Bass Lake Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the welcome address is going to be on a Saturday by none other than our Mayor Protem. And the welcome address that Sunday will be none other than our mayor, excuse me.
It'll be my pleasure.
All right.
And his pleasure.
Okay.
All right. At this point, as we've done every year, Ham, and you all know, we do a proclamation, and this would be for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Days, Sunday and Monday, January 17 and 18, 2016. It's in commemoration of Dr. Martin Luther King's remembrance of America as a hero who stirred the conscience of a whole nation. I think most of us know that story. So therefore, I, Dick Sears, Mayor of Town of Holly Springs, do hereby proclaim Sunday and Monday, January 17 and 18, 2016, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Days in the town of Holly Springs, and I encourage all citizens to rededicate themselves to the principles of respect for human rights and freedom of belief and nonviolence and of committee, commitment to improving our community through community service and volunteerism. I have this for you, Ham, to take back, and we'll give it to you right now.
And we'll what?
And I'm going to give it to you?
It's free.
There's no charge.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ham.
I do, Mayor, and I'm the Commissioners. We honorably thank you very much, and I look back as a model myself, and I don't want to omit one that I have Whitman, who is my educationer and scholarship fund, the rest of it.
All that stuff.
Robert King, who that and all of that, he worked at Stevie Hollywood, this is...
He's a good man.
He kind of seemed down to play a bit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ham.
Thank you, Sam.
Robert, did you want to say anything?
Not a thing, still.
You got a call? All right, we're cool. All right. Thank you. Agenda item 7A, under request communication update on action plan to assess parking issues on Klein Falls Drive. I see our wonderful Chief of Police in the back waiting to...
Wonderful.
Wonderful. Very efficient. Trying to keep myself out of tickets. Never mind.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, as you stated, I'm here to sort of give you an update on the Klein Falls Heritage
Point, at the, that situation with, with parking over there that's been generated from some of the carpool issues that we have there at the school. And I understand this question came up at the last council meeting about what the status was of signage in that area.
Yep.
So I wanted to, if I may, back up just a little bit to September 1 this past year. That's kind of how this, at least the most recent complaint, started. We had a resident come in and express some concerns about the safety for some of the kids that were crossing the street in, in the parent, getting in the parents' cars. At that time, I was asked to come up, and I, and I reported to you that, you know, we'd been working on this issue for quite some time, and I'd also been working with the administrative staff at the school, as well as the Director of Security for the school. In fact, I had spoken to him on September 1st about this issue. We've continued to do that, so moving forward, we've continued to do that. And I think the problem in that area is that, as we monitor it, some days we see more of an issue than others. There are some days that we are out there, we see eight, 10 cars maybe, and we see some people standing around and, and mingling and having discussions and that kind of thing. And other days, there's just a few cars. I think, you know, some of that's driven by the weather, some of it's driven by the time of the year. It just all depends, but we've continued to monitor what's going on out there, and we're, we're not seeing a, a, any grave danger, not seeing any imminent threat to safety for these kids. However, we do see the issues as being brought to our attention by some of the residents out there, and I think if, if nothing else, it could be, you know, it's maybe imposing on some of the things they're trying to do during those times. It looks like it's probably happening about, for a period of about 45 minutes. What, what I would request, and I've been working with the Engineering Department on this, what I would request is that we are allowed to, for the next couple of weeks, more, I guess, intently monitor this situation and come back and report, or make a recommendation. We've done some things. We've had, we've had some prototypes of signs made and, and that kind of thing, and we've, we've got some maps, and we have an idea about where we would put signage out there that may help alleviate the problem, but we first wanted to make sure that we, we truly do have an issue that, that warrants resources. So if, if we could have until the first meeting in February, I believe it's February 2nd, to bring something to council, that would include a change to the ordinance that would support signage. What happened September, at the September meeting is there was, there was some brief discussion after the, the resident brought this to our attention, and then during other business, there was some lengthy discussion about different solutions and remedies, but there was no action taken. So we continued to monitor this, but, you know, without the action, we, you know, we didn't have any clear direction from the council. So we would like clear direction from the council based on the information that we provide to you, you know, on the 2nd. We'll, we'll report back to you and tell you what we, what, as true a picture as we can give you about what's going on out there, along with some changes to the ordinance that would support signage if that, if it's, if it's warranted. There was some discussion about terms such as standing rather than parking, because a lot of what was happening out there wasn't, wasn't our current ordinance that, that governs parking. Would, it just, what's happening out there would not, you know, we would not be able to take any enforcement action if needed. We would need other, other terminology such as standing, and to, to be able to take enforcement action, we would also need the ordinance to support that language. So we would bring all that back to you if it's warranted and make that presentation on, on February 2nd, if that's, if that's a pleasure of the Board.
Well...
Comments?
Yeah, my question, Chief Herring, when, you know, I was one of the people that was out there and saw quite a few cars, and even the officer that was out there that day had said some of the cars saw him and went back around.
Right.
So do you think that is a deterrent, that they're seeing you more frequently out there?
Well, a lot of times, we're, we're in unmarked vehicles, you know, so, so I think that, yeah, absolutely, when we're there, I think that that's a deterrent, and, and, you know, we have to make a determination how much additional resources that we put there. I'd like, I'd also like the opportunity to continue to, to work with the school, with work with, work with the administrative staff at the school as well as security.
The elementary school has been very proactive. I know that. I don't think the middle school has the, like us, has the resources to put someone there, but I know the elementary school has been doing, or they were, having someone check to make sure...
It definitely has an impact when we can get the school involved. I mean, it is an issue that is generated from the school. It's, it's a carpool, well, it's, it's actually people trying to circumvent the carpool, as we know.
Right, right.
So when the school gets involved, and some have, you know, historically, it has, it has helped improve the situation. So I'd like to continue to, to work with the school and work with security and see what help they can give us. But, you know, this does keep coming up. We understand that. And so, you know, we just, we would just like to continue for the next couple of weeks to, to evaluate what's going on there so we can come back and report to you and, and say for certain if we think that, you know, some, no parking, no standing, whatever we end up doing is warranted there, and then also bring you the ordinance changes.
I think one of the questions that came up the last time and time before, and of course, this has gone on now off and on for more than we'd like to know.
Several years.
Signing is one of those critical things that keep coming up, whether or not we need signs or not, which is what we'll wait for from you. Any, any officer attendance in that area for a certain period of time, you know, those kind of questions, and also, if there's an issue with one of the schools or both the schools that we should know about, please have us be involved too. I'd be happy to do that.
Right.
Make sense? Make sense to everybody?
I, I'd like to see y'all really get into checking that out because it only takes one child to jump in front of a car, we have a serious incident there, so it's one life that may be lost, crippled for life. So any, you know, anything we can do to make that safer and get the parents to do what they're supposed to do, get in line in front of the school and, and off those streets.
Yeah, and we, we saw how one of the parents was with your officer that day.
Right.
And it was, you know, so it kind of, it's tricky, but we do need to...
It's, you know, one, just takes one incident.
Right.
You know, one kid getting hurt.
And this is something that we're trying to get out in front of with our new schools. I mean, we bring this up when we, when we meet with, with these new schools and transportation, and we, you know, let them know that this is an issue because we've had it at several other schools and to, you know, it, because if they get involved early and, you know, it's, you know, help with the educational piece of it, and they sort of, I guess, train parents what they, what they should do and how the carpool works, it usually works a lot better. So anything that we can do...
I think we had that when the schools first opened up years ago.
Yep.
What was the name of that street that it was on, behind, right behind?
Right behind Holly Ridge Middle School, the signs there.
Exactly.
And it seems to be...
Flat Rock.
Yeah.
Yeah, Flat Rock. Exactly the same.
A non-issue. The residents are driving that, believe it or not, they come out and point to the sign and say...
Right, good.
That's a good thing.
Well, it takes, it takes, you know, it takes one to be active, proactive in that. But we need to check because, you know, if something happens, they're going to say, well, why wasn't the police there?
Right. I just want to make sure if we do, if we do it, that we have the, the, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, and we've got the ordinance to support it because, I mean, as we know, we have speed limit signs all over town, but they necessarily mean that everybody does a speed limit. So there has to be an enforcement piece, and if that happens, we, you know, we currently can't, can't enforce when someone just stops their car and either discharges or takes on passengers.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, you let us know what it is we need to do to help you on this issue.
We'll report back on February 2nd.
February 2nd. Okay?
Can I, can I ask? We're also, I know your department has been researching the situation along Stinson Avenue, and you've actually addressed some of that as well. I know from a safety perspective, and you did find some violations there that you could address, so it's improved a little, as I understand it, but it's still, still an issue.
It has, it's a, you know, of course, that's a whole different situation, and that, that road is, is nice and wide in that area, so we were not finding, you know, the issues with cars going around, the parked cars, and that becoming a, becoming a hazard, but it was, there were times when they were parked too close to the intersection, so there were some side distance issues and that kind of thing. But when we responded over there, not only did we find the parked cars, but we, we found some ordinance violations such as the multiple axle vehicles, trailers, and that kind of thing, and we, our officers had those moved. So it got cleaned up a little bit, it looked a little bit better, and it also created a little bit more space for people to park further down the road and, and back from that intersection, so we alleviated some of the side distance issues.
I met with Brian Pittman today, high school, and we talked about some of the issues that have been over there. It's not nearly the same thing as what we're talking about here, but he was very complimentary of working with you and the police department on the, trying to get those things resolved, which I think we've got a lot of them resolved. So my, my request would be back on February 2nd, give us a pretty good update on, on the school involvement, and we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Agenda item 8A, Public Hearing, Fuquay-Varina Annexation Agreement Amendment. John Chifano, our Counselor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Before you is a, what would be the Second Amendment to the Fuquay-Varina Annexation Line Agreement, and it basically swaps two parcels, a 23-acre tract approximate near Highway 55 proper there, just pointed out on the map, and that would go to Fuquay-Varina, and a 51-acre tract off of, help me out, Gene.
Duck Horn Cook.
Um...
Buckhorn. Duncan, Duncan Cook Road.
Duncan Cook, right?
Duncan Cook Road, and, you know, very much south of town that would go to the town, go to Holly Springs, and this is, you know, in essence, a request from the Town of Fuquay that we accommodate the line change in this, in this way.
Couple, couple things. Some of us have been working on this for a while, and Gene, I, I would ask you to, to kind of explain a little bit further why this is good for both towns, and perhaps, since you came up with the idea down below, why you did that for us to look at. Chuck and I have been very much involved with this, as has myself and John Byrne. Rick Mullin, who owns the property up on top there, came to me first and requested that the town search for a trade with Fuquay because he's surrounded by Fuquay, he prefers Fuquay because of that, and on top of that, if he can't get Fuquay, then it probably would go to the county. None of us wanted that, so I'm not going to go through all the meetings we've had so far, but there's been a bunch of them, and, and I think your idea came up very well and very high, so give us just a little bit of background on, on what we did.
Sure. Essentially, how this request came to be was Mr. Mullins owns, whoops, wrong direction there. Mr. Mullins owns a parcel of land off of Wade Nash Road, and technically, even though it looks like there's two parcels here, they are legally one parcel of land. So a portion of it is on the south side of Wade Nash Road, and another portion is on the north side of Wade Nash Road. And he has been through Fuquay-Varina to, and we haven't, this map doesn't show it here.
There it is.
Um, this orange line here is the Annexation and Utility Service Boundary Agreement that we have between Holly Springs and the Town of Fuquay-Varina, and it splits his parcel between Holly Springs and Fuquay-Varina. And it's very common for parcels to be split by a road. So it's not something unusual, and it's not uncommon also for a parcel that's split by a road to be split between two different municipalities' annexation and utility service lines. So however, he was caught with this, and there is utilities located to serve this portion of the property in Fuquay-Varina, and he's gone through Fuquay-Varina's review process. He then wanted to extend the subdivision to the north side and ended up finding out and realizing that that would require connection to Holly Springs Utilities. So Holly Springs has been working and is now up and running, is a pump station in this area that was constructed as part of the Wildwood, the Beazer subdivision off of Ralph Stevens Road. And there's existing Wake County subdivisions between Mr. Mullins' property that's in Holly Springs' side of the Annexation Agreement line and where the pump station is. And so we then also started a request process through Wake County to extend our ETJ that would put his parcel in our ETJ, which expedited this conversation, where he has asked that this parcel be switched from a Holly Springs designation to Fuquay-Varina designation. And he approached the town, I believe, and then Mr., or Mayor Burns contacted Mayor Sears to start some conversation. Mayor Sears, Mayor Burns, myself, Chuck Simmons primarily, and Fuquay-Varina's manager has been in a lot of meetings trying to come up with a variety of different resolutions to that. We were kind of coming to a roadblock on different options and different conversations that we were having when I was having some conversation with Mr. Salz, who owns this parcel down off of Duncan Cook Road. He also has a parcel that is a single lot of record that is split by a road and split by our Annexation Service Boundary Lines. And so I asked Mr. Salz if he would be interested in having his property modified from being split between the two municipalities to a single designation under Holly Springs. His property is part of our ETJ request area, and part of the conversation was the fact that he has a really narrow strip of land in this part of his property that would be very challenging to be included... that would be very challenging to be included in a subdivision in Fuquay Varina if this here is developed in Holly Springs. But perhaps, if somebody was looking at this parcel, they may be interested also in his parcel that makes this narrow portion then developable. And if it's all under Holly Springs' jurisdiction, it makes that opportunity a lot more feasible than having to have a later conversation to see if we can come up with another swap. He went back to his family. It's owned under multiple family members, and he did call me back in December and said that they would really be interested in having their property all under Holly Springs and felt that it would be more valuable under Holly Springs than Fuquay Varina. And so, as my understanding then, the mayor brought that, um, option to Mayor Burns, and they were agreeable to it on the Fuquay Varina side. We then realized that if that occurred, this white area here is the Holly Springs, um, portion of the annexation agreement line, that there was this little parcel, this .3 parcel, that would then be in Fuquay Varina and surrounded if we didn't include it as part of this. So this parcel is also part of this, and ironically enough, this parcel is attached to this parcel, which is another split parcel. Are you sure you really wanted to know all of this?
Go ahead.
And so, uh, this parcel...
It is exciting.
Yeah. And then this parcel is also the same owner as this and this. So it made sense for that little, um, piece as well to be included as part of this swap.
Good job. The, the bottom line on this was that after all this time, I'll just say it this way. We traded a 23-acre parcel that was very difficult for us to service, and I did talk to Kendra, and I think we talked about $200,000 to $300,000 to get that line down there as a possibility, to a bigger piece, which was a magnanimous achievement, to have a parcel that we can service much easier. And part of our, what was your line? The, um, go in that direction, there's a name for this. Help me. I don't remember it either, but anyway, it fits our long-term plans, and we love the idea, and, uh, I think it's a win-win. It wasn't easy. So that's my, my story, and I'm sticking with it. Uh, questions while she's up there?
A good job.
From the council?
It's a good job.
Looking good?
Just makes sense.
It does.
Just makes sense.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you for your help. You were instrumental. Thank you. At this point in time, uh, by definition, we'll open the public hearing. There's no one signed up. Therefore, we will close the public hearing and go to the motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance 16-01, amending an annexation agreement line between Holly Springs and Fuquay Varina.
Second. Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you again, Gina.
Very good.
Gen. item 9A, consent agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt the, or accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, if I can find out where I'm at. Here we go. All right, item number 10 is other business, and I'll just do my little anti-bullying campaign speech again, very briefly. We're still on that. We're still making progress. We have an assistant principal at the high school now that has his own anti-bullying team now that they meet, and we're gonna meet with them again shortly. Crosswalk safety still is on the agenda. And, uh, the other thing that we're talking about now, just for future discussion, is more emphasis on downtown development, and we're, we're working on that, as you well know, and have been for quite some time. And Happy New Year. Others? Others? Others?
Yes, sir. I had the, um, the pleasure of running and completing the, uh, Suggly Sweater Run a month ago.
Did you win?
Uh, I did not.
Okay.
And, uh, I just wanted to, you know, commend Meg Smile for a, a very good event. Uh, our police officers did a great job with, um, uh, keeping all the runners safe, and I just wanna thank them as well. And it was, uh, definitely, um, we got a lot of folks from a lot of places who ran in that race. I don't know, there's six, 700 runners.
Really?
And, uh, it was a very, very good event and, uh, a very good, uh, event that highlighted Holly Springs as well as a, a very good charity.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Seeing none, let's go to the managers' report.
Yes, um, would the council be interested next month in an update on the cemetery, the, the work that we're doing out there, because there was some, you approved a new policy, and there's some changes that are forthcoming. The letters have been sent out to the families of the, those that own plots, and we are starting to get some responses back, but we did want to share with you what our plans are moving forward, because that is, that is work in progress. Is that something that you would definitely be interested in? Okay, I, I talked with the engineering about that, so we, we, we're prepared, I think, to do that at the next meeting. Okay, I wanted to share that. Also, some, some good news to start off 2016.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anyone has ever heard of the, there's a website, homesnack.net.
I can't wait.
Okay? Announcing first meeting 2016, there was a survey taken across North Carolina. It, it's actually a Harris Poll.
That's correct.
Using various criteria for the happiest towns in North Carolina.
Did y'all catch that?
Happiest towns in North Carolina. Some of the criteria that were used included the percentage of residents with a college degree. I guess you get, you're happy if you achieve that. This one struck us, average commute times was a factor, cost of living, crime being low, sunny days, percentage of married couples, percentage of homeowners. Those were some of the criteria used. I crunched all those numbers, and Holly Springs came in number two in the state.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so that's something that we've got going for us. Uh, you know, we're sort of proud of. I've been very happy about, um, and, um, they even went as far as to say, when reading the story, that the saddest town in North Carolina, and I hope I don't offend those that live there, is in Laurinburg.
Laurinburg?
Laurinburg.
Actually, I can believe it.
Yeah, it, it can be sort of somewhat sad.
Good, huh? Yeah. Laurinburg, Rockingham.
Apparently Apex had two more sunny days than we did, so I asked...
Yeah, exactly.
I asked Mayor Olive, uh, how that happened, and he said it is the, it's the altitude in, in Apex.
Oh. See, did you notice I did not say who was number one? Apex was the number one, that just slightly edged us out, as, as Councilman Dixon pointed out. They had a couple more sunny days.
Oh, gosh.
I checked their statistics there.
Yeah.
If you remember, if you remember Mayor Weatherly, who used to say at all of our meetings, "We are at the peak of good living." I said, the last meeting we had together, I said, "And, and Mayor, Holly Springs is just slightly above that peak." He never spoke to me again. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, and the only other thing I have, we're, we're still, we, we opened the bids on, uh, South Main Street Extension and also Event Ferry Intersection Improvement, and we are currently working with DOT to get, um, the, uh, the, the, the funding aligned. And our plan would be to either take that to the council, if we can get the funding worked out, either the next meeting, that would be ideally the next meeting, or it could be the, the first meeting in February. But we're working very diligently with the state, and I think they're making some progress.
Did the bids come in?
Came in a little bit higher with the economy, um, activity, economic activity, uh, being, being a little bit, um, on the, on the upside. It wasn't the best time to, to put them out for bids, so the bids did come in a little bit higher. The state's policy is typically, when you have a, a cost overrun, they will pick up 50% of the additional cost, and then we'll have to pick up the, the other 50%. But in addition to that, we've asked them, because these are DOT roads, we've also asked them to look at some other funding sources, so they've looked at some safety money, uh, and we, and that would be 100% if we could get some safety money without a match being required. And, and we, the preliminary indication is that we, we will be getting some safety money, uh, also. So as soon as we can get that to the council, we'll be, we'll be more than glad to get it.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we can start moving on that one.
And Kendra, thank you for your help on these projects, and 90%, we think, at this point, right?
90%.
And you may be looking at the next vice chair of the TCC. We hope at least that, if not chair. Wouldn't that be something? Okay, is that it, Chuck?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Uh-oh. Does that mean we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.